All right, good evening. I'd like to call to order the December 2nd council meeting to order. Clerk Swope, would you please call the roll?
Certainly, Councilmember Brown.
Present.
Councilmember Carter.
Here.
Councilmember Garza.
Here.
Councilmember Hussein.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson.
Present.
Councilmember Cost.
Here.
Councilmember Pallavani-Glu.
Present.
Councilmember Spadefor. There are eight members present at quorum, and we are to the meditation and pledge of allegiance.
Okay. Is there anybody that would like to have someone remembered at this point in time? Seeing none from council, I do have somebody by the name of Jeffrey Isham. He passed away about a week ago. He was one of the plumbers and pipe fitters members for just over thirty years. It was unfortunate that he passed away during the holidays, and I would like him to be remembered at this time. With that, let's rise for a moment in meditation, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Thank you.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and for all.
You have for your approval the proceedings of November 18th.
Vice President Hussein.
I move the minutes as presented.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Any additional comments from council? Seeing none, all those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Okay, we are to comments by councilmembers and the city clerk.
Council, anybody from council have any comments at this time? Vice President Hussein.
Yeah, just a few quick ones. First, I want to remind folks that we have the Southwest Action Group Holiday in the Square. That's this Friday, 6:00 PM. There will be hot cocoa, there will be caroling, I think there's a smores station, Santa will be on hand. This is, we've been doing this for about a handful of years. And I remember about five years ago, we had our first holiday in the square, and there wasn't much of a square. We had kind of a dream of what was to come. We had kind of a patchy grass, we had some rubble, if you will, some asphalt in the place where we had, again, done quite a bit of planning and dreaming and envisioning for a town square. And I remember that first kind of inaugural event, folks were there, they were excited, and they truly believed. You know, fast forward five years, and we have a beautiful town square, we have a new park across the street, we had a school building demoed to make way for a new development project, and I think it's going to bring a lot of new life into that area. And so it truly has just become a celebration, I think, of community, a celebration of the hard work, a celebration of the vision of folks, stakeholders, I think, in Southwest Lansing. And so we would love, love, love to see folks out. Again, that's this Friday, and participating really in what has become a celebration of community. Again, 6:00 PM, that's at 3434 Pleasant Grove Road, which is on the southwest corner of Pleasant Grove and Holmes. Also Churchill Downs, what an incredible, incredible neighborhood. I actually had, Councilman Cost had the ability to, or the opportunity, I should say, to attend a, Councilman Cost is everywhere, by the way, but he had an opportunity to attend their, I think, their November meeting, and contacted me. I had a family commitment, was unable to make it, and was just talking about how incredible that group is, the attendance, the engagement, the activity, and it truly is. It's an amazing, amazing neighborhood. I think it's a neighborhood on the move, and they have a, their annual holiday celebration, and that's going to be December 17th at 6:30 PM, and that is at 5825 Wise Road. So if you have historically participated in their events or not, I highly, highly, highly encourage you to get out. Again, that is December 17th, 6:30 PM at 5825 Wise Road. Hopefully that will serve as a springboard for you in terms of participation next year, because there's a lot of really cool things happening as part of that neighborhood. We want you to be involved. And then lastly, I want to shout out a few young people we have in the audience, and I'm going to actually ask them to stand up along with their staff advisor, who is Mr. Kevin Case. We actually have the Waverly Warrior Student Council on hand, so if we can give them a round of applause. Just gave them. They just do, we wanted them to come out and see this, you know, kind of process play out. They run their meetings in much of the same fashion as we do. But what's really incredible about that group is the advocacy for their peers, the community service projects that they have participated in, and maybe they don't even know they're going to participate in come 2025, and really their efforts at acclimating themselves, right, to what does that act of citizenry participation look like? And so we certainly appreciate them. They really kind of put themselves in a vulnerable spot earlier this year for running for those positions, and certainly we commend them for everything they have done and will do. So thanks for being here, guys, we appreciate it.
Thank you, Vice President. Do we have any additional comments from council at this time? I see none. Clerk Swope.
Thank you. I don't have any comments, so we will go to community event announcements. Anyone in the audience, we will give you up to one minute to give us the details of
So I am Nicholas Zanny, I'm the president of the Old Everett Neighborhood Association. I want to inform you that there will not be an Old Everett Neighborhood meeting in the month of December. We're taking the holidays off, just like a few other neighborhood associations do. So, but we will start up again in January on the third Wednesday this time, on January 15th, since one of our board members actually has a birthday the week prior, and they're going to be out of town during that week, so we've had to switch over to the third week. So it will be at same location as always, 3525 South Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard, Suite G, at the Village Lansing. We are still looking for a vice president, a secretary, a treasurer, and a communications director, as well as board, regular board members for the Kavanaugh and Kenyon precincts. Those will be two each.
Thank you. Any other community events? All right, seeing none. We are to the, time to, if you haven't already signed in for, to speak under legislative matters, you need to sign up in the next minute or so. Legislative matters does include items four through ten on the agenda, and also if you are here for the show cause hearing for 122 South Grand, you do need to sign in for that as well. And in the meantime, we are to the mayor's comments.
Mayor Schorr.
Thank you, Mr. President. A few quick announcements. First, this will be the last week for yard waste. I know that they are a little behind due to the Thanksgiving weekend, but that will be picked up this week, and then anything that isn't picked up by the end of the week, they'll still come around and get it, but I ask everyone, please, whatever yard waste you have, this is the last week. I know there are bags that are ready to be picked up, and there's snow on them, but we'll get them. Second, we will be doing our community budget discussion at 6:00 PM at Guyer on Thursday. We started doing these, we send our budget to council, but before I put the other, the budget that we send to council for their consideration, we like to hear from constituents and hear their budget priorities as well. So we'll be doing that Thursday at 6:00 PM. I know that folks are mostly aware, but as some know, PHP Physicians Health Plan has gone out of business, so for our council members, it's certainly going to affect our employees, it'll affect some of our retirees, and I know that that's the same for folks out in Lansing. We have been assured that PHP will continue to serve through the benefit plan, and then when open enrollment comes, that just won't be an option. We will be doing an RFP for other providers, so we'll be working on that, just as everyone else who utilizes that in our city will. It's disappointing, but that's their business plan, and so we'll find alternatives. I would like to commend the Lansing Empowerment Network. One of the things that they're working on when you look at addressing gun violence is immediate support for victims and families, and long-term strategies to foster community healing. I think Councilwoman Pallavani-Glu was on the call. They're creating a critical incident community plan, response plan, and it's impressive. It's really impressive. The initiative, it's community-centered, provides rapid compassionate intervention to those who have faced harm and need the resources. So I want to commend those folks, and I want to commend the hospitals, Sparrow, for working with them to make sure that we can get folks into the hospitals to work through this critical incident response. So thought it was worth throwing out some kudos on that, and it was a lot of work going on. And finally, I want to wish a happy birthday to our state senator, Sarah Anthony, or one of our two state senators, Sarah Anthony, whose birthday is today, and I apologize for outing her on that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, we are to show cause hearings. We have one show cause hearing on orders to make, save, or demolish the owners of 122 South Grand Avenue.
Councilman Cost.
Thank you, President Garza. As you may all recall, we've had this before us before. At the last council meeting, there was a mix-up with paperwork, so we're going to do this all over again. I just briefly will go over this. This is 122 South Grand Avenue, which is the Walter Neller Building. It's owned by Summit Associates, the second LLC. This was originally red-tagged 10/20/2016. It is SEV 561,800. Estimated repair cost is 2.5 million, and I don't believe this is fire damage, so this would be a 60-day make, save, or demolish. That's what I have.
Thank you, Councilman Cost.
All right, we have one speaker signed in, Lindsey LeBlanc. You have up to three minutes to address city council.
Great, thank you. My name is Lindsey LeBlanc. I'm from Granger Group. We are the parent company of the Walter Neller Building. Thank you for having us tonight. The building is unfortunately not salvageable, it has to be demoed, and we agree with that. We have tried to make it safe over the years. We've worked with the city, putting the murals on the buildings to kind of move that into keeping it safe for the public while we've worked on redeveloping what we want to do with this particular site. We've presented many different ideas to the city, worked with them through some brownfield plan ideas, and that really have never taken off over the years. But we understand that it's become a now or never situation. We think that we've got the right team in place. We met last week with City of Downtown, or Downtown Lansing, Inc., the development director. We've got a good idea of what we want to do and are hoping to push that forward. In the last few weeks, I have worked with a company called Mission Management to demo the building. We've applied for an abatement permit. That contract should be signed within a couple of days. We're hoping to have the abatement done by the end of January and the demo done sometime in March, with hopefully a new project coming in the wings this fall. We ask that you continue to work with us, have some patience, development takes time, and we're hoping that we bring something really special and beautiful to the city of Lansing. Thank you.
Thank you. On the referral of the show cause hearing?
That will go to Public Safety.
Okay, and that takes us to public comment on legislative matters, which, as I indicated, includes items four through ten on the council agenda. Item four is a scheduled public hearing, transformational brownfield plan number 87, New Vision Lansing, multiple addresses.
Vice President Hussein.
Sure, just very quickly, the TBP number 87 deals with the New Vision Lansing proposed development as just reference. It does deal with multiple addresses, actually up from three development locations to five development locations. In any event, this does contemplate a 30-year tax capture, including, because this is a transformational brownfield plan, it does include myriad taxes to reimburse this particular development team for eligible expenses. You may recall that from the introduction setting of the public hearing, not only is the proposed development up from three to five, I'm sorry, up to five from three sites, also the proposed investment is up to 316 million dollars, so it's about a 25% increase from what was originally proposed. As actually required by transformational brownfield legislation, this actually deals with commercial, residential, parking, so there's a number of things that are involved in these respective projects. Just very quickly, the five projects, we have the Tower on Grand, which will comprise a 27-story tower with 287 residential units and 48,000 square feet of attached commercial retail space and a 314 space parking facility with two-level spanning Grand Avenue. We have the Washington Square Development, which will convert the Washington Square Office Building into 60 apartments that will have some, I'm sorry, these will be missing middle apartments, dealing with workforce housing, so there are some, in addition to the transformational brownfield and the $40 million that we received and appropriated from the state, there's also some missing middle dollars from MISTHA being contemplated for this project. With regard to the Capitol Tower Project, that will redevelop, redevelop a site at Walnut and Ottawa Streets across from the state Capitol, significantly increasing density with the development of mixed-use commercial and residential building. It'll be one floor of office space and four residential floors. That is down from the initial ten, and the way it was explained to us when we introduced this at the public hearing is that they wanted to compliment, not compete with the Capitol. The Ingham Building is the adaptive reuse of a historic downtown office building, so this is just, just east of the Hop Knob Coffee Shop, and they are looking at, I believe, it's six floors of, let's see, mostly residential, 25 furnished apartment units, and then there will be some existing office use will be removed, though approximately 1,500 square feet will be maintained as retail and commercial space on the ground floor. And then lastly, and probably the one that we have received the most correspondence on, deals with the Old Town Project. And that is contemplated to be a seven-story mixed-use building with an integrated, sorry, ADA space, two-story parking facility, retail space facing Turner Street, and a five-floor apartment building with 90 units, Studio One, and two-bedroom layouts for a total project square footage of 60,961 square feet. We, again, just referencing, we did get copious amounts of correspondence on this. My understanding is that the development team has, maybe within the last 24 hours, connected with folks in the OTC, and that there is a meeting between the development team and the OTC, I think, on the 10th. Is that correct?
The 10th.
Okay, fantastic. That's all I got.
Thank you, Vice President Hussein.
Okay, we did receive a number of written communications regarding the public hearing that, I'll just mention who they are from, Samantha Benson, Jamie Shreiner, Eric Hanna, Summer Shreiner, Mitch Rice, and LeAnn Zimny. Those will all be made part of the public hearing record, and here to speak tonight, we have Samantha Benson, followed by LeAnn Zimny, and you'll have three minutes each.
Good evening, councilmembers. Thank you for the chance to speak tonight. My name is Samantha Benson. I'm the executive director of the Old Town Commercial Association, or the OTC. I'm here tonight to express eventual support for, as well as some additional concerns about the Old Town Project within the New Vision Lansing Plan. The Old Town Project was added to the TIF plan late in the process, and there are still a lot of unknowns, at least for our community, things like design details, traffic management, and how this development will fit within the historic fabric of our district. I will say that we fortunately made contact with Paul and John in the last four days, and my hope is that we'll have a moment to sit down soon and get to know them, as well as the $30 million project across the state from us. We've been reassured that they are good local developers, and coming from six years of working for another good local developer, I really, truly want to believe that, but I'm not here to speak on behalf of myself, I'm here to speak on behalf of the Old Town community. Small businesses in Old Town are already facing challenges and have already seen one of their most difficult years yet. If we approve these tax incentives without clear commitments from the developer, like a community benefits agreement, there's a real risk we could lose the character that makes Old Town so unique. We need to ensure that the developer follows through and promises to support the businesses and the people who have invested so much in this neighborhood. That's why I'm asking council to delay approval of the sought-after tax incentives until we can have a more transparent, meaningful conversation set up between the developer and the stakeholders in the neighborhood. We want to make sure this development benefits everyone and doesn't compromise what makes Old Town such a special place. This is a wonderfully large investment in the heart of our neighborhood, and we deserve to understand how it's going to benefit Old Town. With more time and the right kind of agreement in place and direct conversation held, we believe this project can be something that strengthens our neighborhood for the long term. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. Next, we have LeAnn Zimny, followed by Jamie Shreiner.
Good evening, President Garza, members of city council, Mayor Schorr, and of course, Clerk Swope. My name is LeAnn Zimny. I live at 1317 Turner Street in Old Town, Ward One. Tonight, I'm here on behalf of myself to ask for you to support New Vision Lansing's Transformational Brownfield Plan 87. I first moved to Lansing in 1975, working downtown for 20 years, first as a city planner for Lansing, later as an economic developer for the Department of Commerce at the state of Michigan, and I returned to Lansing when I retired and now live in Old Town. From what I read, the residential development that New Vision Lansing's plan will generate in downtown will bring much-needed workforce-priced housing to the downtown and provide a 24/7 customer base to revitalize economic activity in downtown. The proposed bridge across the Grand River will link Michigan Avenue, the Stadium District, and Museum Drive, food and entertainment venues, to new residents living downtown for the benefit of all. In Old Town, the addition of workforce-priced residential opportunities will allow shop and restaurant employees to live near their workplace and spur more economic vitality as new residents eat, shop, enjoy, and volunteer at Old Town festivals, frequent the Turner Dodge Museum, and pursue the many resources along the River Trail. Please consider these benefits and support Transformational Brownfield Plan Number 87 to help make New Vision Lansing's five projects a reality. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Jamie Shreiner, followed by David Ellis.
Good evening, thank you for having me. My name is Jamie Shreiner. I'm a resident and commercial property owner in Old Town and live across the street from the proposed development. I'm also the chair of the Old Town Commercial Association, the nonprofit that's been committed to revitalizing Lansing's Old Town since 1996. I'm here to talk about the proposed development on Turner Street in Old Town. I learned of the development from the mayor's press release a month or so ago. While I have been following the discussion of the downtown developments, and actually very excited to see them, I had no idea there was a proposed Old Town development. I haven't yet found a single neighbor who was aware of the development before the press release, and I would note too, my neighbor Terry, Terry is here, and he said that neither MICA or the Arts Council have had any interaction or knew of the developments either. Since the announcement, we've not been engaged by the developer. However, we were able to find his contact information and emailed back and forth over the last few days. However, this interaction was minimal, and our first engagement from, and was the first engagement from the developer with the Old Town community, to my knowledge. We've invited the developer to attend our next board meeting next week on the 10th, as you've heard, which consists of our 10-member board, but this will be the first interaction with a very small group of people and who have a very tight agenda with it being our last meeting of the year, as I'm sure you all understand. I'm really excited for the development. This will be the largest development in Old Town in the last 100 years. This could be absolutely huge for our community, but I have deep concerns with the lack of community engagement alongside significant city incentives. By no means do I want to hold up the developments downtown, but I would like a binding commitment from the city and the developer to work with the community to ensure that the incentives for Old Town are contingent upon community engagement, inappropriate community engagement. Concerns we have are with the design, curb cuts on Turner Street, impact on businesses and special events, community engagement, building materials, community benefits, and more. And while I believe that all of this can be addressed, there's no way that this can be addressed in the next two weeks prior to your approval. Because of this, I encourage you to hold off on the approval of incentives for only the Old Town portion of the developer's proposal. Alternatively, incentive payments could be contingent upon appropriate community engagement, engagement that should have started two years ago when this project apparently started in the planning process. Again, I'm really excited for this. I stand to benefit tremendously from it personally. I own property across the street and see this as something that's wonderful, but I believe that the community must be immediately and meaningfully engaged, which is a much longer process than what can happen in the next two weeks. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have David Ellis, and then Don Dean.
Hi, David Ellis, downtown Lansing resident. I am commenting on items four, and I'm not sure if I'm allowed to comment on item three of the agenda, but to start with the New Vision Project, I had some initial criticisms before, way back when they first announced it, and some of those I still hold, and I'm not going to give up. That being said, I am in strong support of the brownfield, and I am incredibly excited to see these developments go through. To quote an article from a couple years ago, "The Lansing City Council Endorses Tax Breaks For The GM Battery Plant On The West Side," and if you follow the news, you'll see that GM just sold their stakes in that. For once, we are seeing a development in Lansing where they are proposing scaling it up instead of scaling back or pulling out altogether. That's, I don't know the last time I've seen that. That's kind of, this is a shock to me. I was expecting to see them drop one of the buildings from the project, but no, we're having them added to it. I think one of my only personal problems with the new thing is that that new building, the planning is in Old Town and not in downtown, but that's just me being completely selfish. This is a great thing for downtown, it's a great thing for Old Town, this is what we have been waiting for. My whole time being, coming to council meetings, I've heard people saying that we have a chicken and egg issue where there is no one who lives downtown because there's nothing to do downtown, and there's no businesses downtown because there's no one who lives there to do it. This is the people downtown, this is what has the people downtown, this is the houses they will live in. This is sort of the slipping into that cycle and breaking it. This is what we need to thrive. So I'm going to ask council to strongly, strongly consider supporting all the brownfields on the table. Thank you.
Thank you, and next we have Don Dean.
Thank you, Don Dean, Northside. I just looked at the agenda, seeing my friend Glenn Lopez is on number seven, so I just wanted to express my support for Glenn because he's a great community leader.
Thank you, and that was our final speaker for this section on the referral of the public hearing.
That will go to committee of the whole. Committee of the whole.
Okay, and we are to the consent agenda.
Vice President. Vice President Hussein.
And I believe we are taking number six off, correct? Okay, so we have one item. We have the redevelopment area liquor license for Panda Off Hill Corporation, doing business at the Lansing Duck Pen at 3224 East Michigan Avenue, Suite G. If that adds to the agenda.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Is there any additional comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please state by saying aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Then we are to item six, the appointment of Chelsea Dowler to the Catta Board.
Chelsea, if you're still in the audience, would you please come on down? Go to Vice President Hussein.
Yep, I will be quick. We had Ms. Chelsea Dowler into committee of the whole earlier, did a fantastic job, I think, as part of the interview. This is, you'll notice that the term expires September 30, 2025, this is a partial term to, I believe it was Ms. Geis that vacated her position. But in any event, Ms. Dowler, she is the, if she looks familiar, she's the current projects coordinator with the LEDC. Her first choice, which we always like to see on the application, was to serve Iron Catta's Board of Directors. Talked a little bit about being a regular passenger, very passionate about public transit, understands, I think, the role it plays in economic development. Talked a little bit about a commitment that she wants to get out to the neighborhoods and talk about fixed route system in general, maybe how it can be approved, and then obviously the curb-to-curb services and things of that nature, but certainly appreciate her willingness to serve and her willingness to get out to the community and engage to make sure that we have the best public transit system in the state. So with that being said, I would move the appointment of Chelsea Dowler.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Is there any additional comments, questions from council? Seeing none, all those in favor, please state by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes, congratulations. Congratulations.
I hear these are a couple of your favorite lines.
Yes.
Okay, if you could raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Capitol Area Transportation Authority Board Member.
Of the Office of Capitol Area Transportation Authority Board Member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
All right, congratulations.
Thank you.
And that takes the council to the appointment of Glenn Lopez to the Human Relations and Community Services Advisory Board.
Councilman Jackson.
Thank you, Glenn. If you're in the building, come on down. I would like to move the appointment of Glenn Lopez as the first ward member of the HRCS Advisory Board for a term to expire June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five. Mr. Lopez is a lifetime Lansing resident. He has a history of activism in his family. He's been employed with the Lansing School District for forty years. He's coached various youth sports for many, many years as well. In fact, I saw a picture of you on Facebook coaching the Lansing Mustangs floor hockey team. It was a younger-looking Mr. Lopez, but it was definitely you. And he has served in various capacities with the city, and somebody suggested to him that he would be a good member for this advisory board, and he looked into it and agreed and has went before our committee and passed out three-oh. I would move his appointment today.
Thank you, Councilman Jackson. We have a proper motion in place. Is there any additional comments? Councilman Brown.
Thank you so much, President Garza. Thank you for being here. I just wanted to reiterate all of the service and community impact. You've impacted my life even as a young person for nearly thirty years, and I wouldn't be standing up here today if it wasn't for voices, for care, for wisdom from people like yourself and you specifically. So I'm so honored to be here and to support your appointment and humbled to do so, so thank you.
I was one of my participants in a kids' camp program. I was a community center.
Yeah.
One day I came into the city and I saw him as a councilman. We must have done, we must have done real good with him, right?
Thank you, and God bless you.
Okay, do we have any additional comments from council? We do have a proper motion in place. All those in favor, please state by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Congratulations.
All right. You raise your right hand.
I do, here it is.
Repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duty.
Of the Office of.
Of the Office of.
Human Relations and Community Service Advisory Board Member.
Human Relations and Community Service Advisory Board Member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
All right, congratulations.
Thank you.
And the council is to item eight, the claim appeal for CDDM Corporation.
Councilman Jackson.
Thank you. This is an interesting claim appeal for a property located at fifty-nine-ten South Pennsylvania, also known as Centerfolds. They had a trash violation where they had dumpsters in the back and various trash, including a couch, that was there, and then they came and they, well, not they, but the property owners removed some of the trash and by their own words flipped the couch over the fence back to the apartment complexes because they said people dumped their property, including that couch, from there and other places into their property. So they cleaned some stuff up, put the couch back, but then somebody put the couch back over in time for the city to come and see the couch was still there. It got removed. There was a minimum cost of the three-hundred-dollar transport fee and the two-hundred-and-sixty-something-dollar administration fee. Initially, council had thought that everything was going to be where they're going to have to pay it all, except we learned that the city did not take a picture of the violation on the date of the violation to put with the paperwork, so therefore, the committee felt that it wouldn't be fair to charge the administration fee when all of the proper notice and procedural things weren't done properly. So we voted to take that out, and it ended up to be a total owed of three-hundred-and-sixty-four dollars, and I would move that claim.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Is there any additional comments or questions from council? All right, seeing none. All those in favor, please state by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, and item nine is going to be held back, so we are to item ten, the ordinance for passage, and I don't have my language in front of me, so hang on one second.
Sure, thank you. I would move the passage of this ordinance. The ordinance amends Chapter four oh four, provide for designated electric vehicle parking space regulations. We talked about this a few times in this room. It's also passed out of committee this week. It defines an electric vehicle as well as an electric vehicle parking space and dictates that there can be a penalty for using a space when you're not actively charging, or not an EV.
Sorry about that. Council rules require me to read the title of the ordinance. So we have an ordinance of the City of Lansing, Michigan, to amend Chapter four oh four of the Lansing Codified Ordinances to add Section four oh four point one four, to provide for the efficient use of EV charging station parking spaces and penalties for violations of use restrictions. It's read a second time by its title. It was reported from the committee and is on the order of immediate passage.
Okay. We do have a proper motion in place. Is there any additional questions or comments from council? Seeing none. All roll call vote, please.
On adoption of the ordinance, Councilmember Brown. Councilmember Carter. Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson. Councilmember Cost.
Yes.
Councilmember Pallivanoglu.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Eight aces, zero nays, the ordinance is adopted.
Mr. President, I move for immediate effect.
Okay, we have a motion for immediate effect. All those in favor, please state by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, and we are to speaker registration for public comment on city government-related matters. That's the yellow sheet in the back, and we'll give you about another minute to sign in if you wish to address city council. And in the meantime, we are to reports of city officers, boards, and commissions.
Vice President Hussein.
I move that all items be considered as read and full and that the referrals be made by you, President Garza.
Okay, we have another proper motion in place. All those in favor, please state by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, we have minutes of boards and commissions.
Place on file.
From the mayor, we have a grant acceptance firearms prohibition enforcement project.
Ways and Means and Internal Auditor.
Outside legal counsel, Wex and Lexemberg PC to represent the city in City versus Purdue Pharma.
Committee of the Whole.
Act five of two thousand twenty-two, purchase of property at nine-twenty-seven South Grand Avenue.
That would be development and planning.
We have workers' compensation settlements.
Ways and Means and Internal Auditor.
The appointment of Cheryl Bernard to the, as the third ward member of the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Advisory Board.
Equity, diversity, and inclusion.
Okay, and item seventeen has been pulled, so communications and petitions. A notice from Liquor Control Commission requesting ownership of an escrow license at eighteen-twenty-five East Michigan Avenue.
City operations.
And claim appeal, Adam Fisher, for five-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars in trash fees at fifty-nine-hundred South Washington Avenue.
City operations.
And we are to remarks by councilmembers.
Do we have any additional remarks from council? Seeing none.
Remarks by the mayor.
Mayor Shore.
Just one. I forgot to mention that this Thursday, the old newsboys will be walking around downtown collecting money. They'll be selling the Lansing spoof journal, so I hope folks will stop and buy, enjoy the spoof journal, which is hilarious, and support shoes for kids throughout the Ingham, Eaton, and Clinton region. So thank you to everyone involved with the Lansing spoof journal and to the old newsboys, and I know we'll all support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, to public comment, we have Wesley Pandoff, followed by Daniel Black.
My name is Wes Pandoff. I'm the owner and president of Lansing Duckpin. I appreciate you guys approving our redevelopment area liquor license, and we look forward to being part of the redevelopment of the Frandore area, part of the Red Cedar, but we're very excited for the project, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Daniel Black, followed by David Ellis.
Jack, one, two. Testing, one, two, one, two, three. Were you able to hear it now? Sorry about that. Low signal.
Hold it like that. I need my hands. Thank you. Daniel Black here, five-one-seven, five-zero-seven, five-five-five-two. Here tonight for what I feel is one very important reason. That reason being to ask, like I've asked multiple winters, that for the sake of seniors, the disabled, chair users, electric mobility scooter users, and the unstable on their feet, that the city puts teeth and continues to put even bigger teeth into its sidewalks, snow clearing ordinance, similar to what Councilman Jeffrey Brown, Tamara Carter, Trini P., and maybe some others, my fourth ward included, started to put in these, last year, started to put last year, put those teeth into really enforcing that ordinance. We can all revisit the issue that happened eight or ten years ago with several school-age children having to walk out into the street and, yeah, I don't need to continue. As an addendum to my snow clearing ordinance of importance, during the committee of the whole tonight, I overheard one of the councilmen, identity unknown, say, "Of course, you might expect your funding to be cut or not fully funded next year as you're not fully staffing this year." So I might ask, in what dream world is this happening? Thank you.
Thank you. Next is David Ellis, followed by Nicholas Zandi.
David Ellis, downtown Lansing resident. I can't believe I am talking about Michigan Avenue yet again. Now that it's actually open for the season, I know it's not completely done, so I'm going to forgive some of the issues with it. I got to try it out and see how these new bike lanes are, and they are just as bad as I have been saying they would be for the past year and a half, and they are just as bad as they, I said they would be for the exact reason I have said to them. And what makes it worse is that to my face, to the mayor's face, and I know for a fact to Ryan Tosh and Ken's face, the Public Service Director, Andrew K. Patrick, is a bald-faced liar. I like to be positive with these meetings. I like to try to not call out names. I am beyond disgusted with this. We were told that, early on, we were told there would be asphalt for the bike lanes, which there wasn't, so it was a nonstop bumpy ride from one end to the other. We were told that the bike lanes were put up against the sidewalk so that snowplows could plow them. That was a lie, because first of all, we know there is not going to be full-sized snowplows on the sidewalk right next to the buildings, and secondly, they didn't plow it. It was a sheet of ice from Leslie to Mifflin yesterday. We know that it was a lie when they said Michigan Avenue has to have that second lane because Sparrow demands it, because Sparrow themselves in a meeting said, in the news, in the news, said that they do not require that because they only need two accesses to the building, and the access from four-ninety-six and from Saginaw Oakland fulfills that. We were told that the local businesses would not, they would be educated ahead of time on that it's a bike lane and that they can't be doing things to, like, to block it, and we know that was a lie because not only have I seen three different businesses completely blocking the bike lane with signs, and there was a trash can at one point from one of them, but also the Enterprise right next to the Blimpies had their cars parked lining along the sidewalk and the bike lane, completely blocking it. I was told that this would be a safe design, and my issues with cars blowing across stop signs would not be a problem, and I know that was a lie because I rode down once and up once yesterday, and in that time, down and then back up, there was two near misses with cars blowing through the stop sign. One almost hit me, one I almost hit them because they pulled right in front of me when I had the right-of-way, and four different times, I had to ride out into the street and to avoid cars. This was fourteen-point-one million dollars, and we didn't get a bike lane. Are you kidding me?
Thank you. Next is Nicholas Zandi, followed by Andrew Muley.
You know who I am. I am Nicholas Zandi, and I am here to speak a bit about what I found out from the charter commission meeting about the history of the at-large seats. And frankly, knowing, I don't want to spread any hate towards any of the at-large members. I'm sure you're really dedicated to your communities, and I know one of them is from the same neighborhood I grew up in. That being said, now, this is public, so I can say this, as this is on the city YouTube channel. City clerk mentioned that the at-large seats were created during the nineteen fifties, during that charter commission, and when I heard that, I was honestly not too shocked that it was created, but also just angry that they were created in a certain time because something about that timeline seems pretty sus as, or suspect, because the, because during that time, there was, heated discussions about Jim Crow and civil rights, and there was also discussions about the Red Scare, and I wonder if either of those two may have been factors in the creation of the at-large seats. If that is true, and even if it's not true, this just shows that the at-large seats were probably rotten from the start. They should never have been created, and they're created as a product of hate and fear, something that we desperately need to move on from, and I would say we have moved on from, but considering the recent election results, sadly, it seems like we haven't. But if we really want to move on from that, we need to get rid of the at-large seats because in many towns other than Lansing, like in North Charleston and in Detroit, they were products of Jim Crow and of the Red Scare, and we need to move beyond those bygone eras. The Soviet Union has completely collapsed, and there's no hope of it or fear of it. and there's no hope of it, or fear of it, ever coming back, as shown in Ukraine and Russia's awful handling of the war. And then there, and we really need to fully move on from the Jim Crow stuff, so that's why we need to get rid of the at-large seats, because they are not necessary and are just completely, and are very likely products of Jim Crow and/or the Red Scare. That is all I'll need to say about it, and I'll yield the rest of my time and tell everyone to please consider investigating it with the library.
Thank you. Next, we have Andrew Muley, followed by Bill Castaner.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Andrew Muley, and I live at 124 Regent Street on the east side of Lansing. I'm a member of the Coalition to Preserve Eastern High School and Promote Mental Health. I ask anyone in the audience here tonight in support of the Coalition to please stand for a moment. Thank you. I'm a 2013 graduate of Eastern, and I love Lansing, my hometown. I know that this has been a long, tumultuous road of information, opinions, articles, discussions, online comments, and disagreement. I get that. The former Eastern is U of M Health Sparrow's property. It has a right to demolish any and all of the building. I get that, too. The Coalition has always been in full support of the construction of the proposed behavioral health facility. I commend U of MHS for acknowledging the need for this type of treatment center here. Eastern in its entirety is a massive building. The goal of this Coalition has been to work with U of MHS to envision a harmonious site plan that preserves the iconic Pennsylvania Avenue West Wing and the John Young Auditorium, while still realizing the full potential of the psychiatric facility. We believe the preservation could yield benefits for the health system and the community and leave ample room for the new facility. This moment in time is about civic engagement and the intersection of health and medicine, arts and culture, history and architecture, and innovation. Imagine what a collaboration of this nature with the tandem goal of restoring a piece of a treasured building just blocks from the Michigan Capitol, and the creation of a new facility for desperately needed services could mean for our capital city. Imagine the West Wing serving to complement and enhance the extended campus with features like a welcome center, a medical library, admin offices, a number of classrooms for flexible use, short-term housing for temporary employees like traveling nurses or medical residents, and an auditorium for professional conferences and community arts and cultural use. I hope that together, we can organize and realize the full potential of a connection of past and future, people and service, place and healthcare. This could truly be a win-win and something extremely special and lasting for Lansing, its people, and its future. Thank you.
We are past the point in our agenda when applause is allowed, so if we can refrain from that, please. Next is Bill Castaner, followed by Dale Schrader.
Good evening. The last time I was here to address council, I came to speak about the preservation of Morse River Pool. And I am very happy to say that happened. Well, tonight, I want to talk a little bit about Eastern High School also. The way I'm going to do that is, recently, I spoke to the University of Michigan Regents meeting in Flint, Michigan, and I want to read the statement I made to them. And I also want to reaffirm that after I made this statement, there were no comments, no one asked questions, and no one has been in touch with us. Lansing is a place where, working together, the whole is greater than the sum of its parts. I offer one example. In 1966, when faced with losing a General Motors presence entirely, Lansing stood up and made the impossible possible, becoming the only city in the United States to have two new auto plants. A former Eastern High School teacher, David Hollister, led that effort as mayor. Last June, we were elated when U of M released plans to build a mental health facility, but also gobsmacked by the news that Eastern High School would be torn down. After months of discussion, U of M ended all of those discussions on September 19th and reaffirmed Lansing Eastern would be torn down. In 2015, when the University of Michigan was faced with a deteriorating Michigan Union, tearing it down wasn't considered. The structure was built in 1919 and designed by the noted University of Michigan graduates and Chicago architects Irving and Alan Pond. It was restored at a cost in 2020 of $86.2 million. However, in Lansing, the University of Michigan has said they'll tear down Lansing Eastern High School, another important Pond and Pond-designed structure, probably one of the most significant landmarks in our city. The Pond brothers were leaders in the collegiate-style, Gothic-style of public architecture. In addition to Lansing Eastern, they designed the MSU Union, the Crisman Brothers Building in downtown Lansing, and ironically, an early version of Sparrow Hospital along with the MSU Union. U of M has also told us they would move the facility elsewhere if the community didn't accept their plan, thereby garnering community support from organized labor, mental health proponents, and Lansing City Council to tear down Eastern High School. This effectively shut down robust discussion about saving historic structures. A recent New York Times article on the resurgence of Detroit cited the importance of historic restoration in the city by highlighting the Ilitch family, Dan Gilbert, and William Clay Ford. We are asking that U of M join those visionaries by saving a portion of Eastern High School. In keeping with that spirit, the Coalition is asking the Regents of the University of Michigan to take a step back and consider a plan to preserve a portion of the iconic structure.
Thank you. Next is Dale Schrader, followed by Jennifer Grau.
Good evening, council, mayor. Appreciate it. My name is Dale Schrader. I'm a, I live at 1101 Seymour Avenue. Most of you know me, but my background is former president of Preservation Lansing, former chair of the Friends of Morse Park Pool Committee, currently serving as a BWL Commissioner-at-Large. But tonight, I'm speaking as a Lansing citizen. So when I wrote this speech, short speech, I hoped it wasn't too late. But if it is too late, we have, I have to ask, how did we get to this point? And it seems like U of M gave us a choice, U of M Hospital. It's one, mental health facility and labor for jobs, or save a small portion of this old building. One or the other. For the record, I'm pro-labor. I can't imagine anybody being against a mental health facility, but that was a choice. If, maybe there were, if anything, maybe there would be more jobs if they decided to do the preservation. But again, once again, we're talking about a small portion of this building. I brought a drawing just to, I don't know if you can see it from here. That's this, this little sliver here with the blue arrows right here. This is all part of Eastern as well. Take it, you know, leave it. There's 18 acres on this site. So all we're asking is for this, this one, you know, you've all seen it along Pennsylvania, beautiful, beautiful building. And it's not just an old building. It's SHPO, State Historic Preservation Office, called it one of the top 10 architecturally significant buildings in the city of Lansing. So, you know, like I said, it's 18 acres. We're only talking about the West Wing. It also includes a really beautiful auditorium, if you've been in there. I saw on, an article on MLive that U of M is doing quite a bit of this in downtown Ann Arbor. You know, but here, they're coming into Lansing, and this is our structure here. And, you know, I just don't think we should allow that to happen. And, you know, I'll close with, you know, three minutes. Maybe, I'm disappointed to see we can't seem to have a reasonable discussion. We always get to this point where it's a crisis. And now, maybe next time, you know, we can sit down the mayor and council and have a reasonable discussion before this all becomes a crisis. And I think that very soon, it's very sad that we'll all be missing and talking about the loss of this, this wonderful building. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Jennifer Grau, followed by Belinda Fitzpatrick.
Jennifer Grau, 201 Lathrop Street. I have enormous respect for this body and for you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for taking public comments. I know it is not always easy, but it is the cornerstone of our democracy. I also know you make many difficult decisions every day. Mayor Schor, in a recent letter to one of our Coalition members regarding Eastern High School, you said, "Any discussion related to the preservation of this building should be discussed with U of M Health representatives." And we agree. Unfortunately, they don't want to speak with us. And unlike this body, there isn't a meeting where U of M Health Sparrow Board members hear public comments. The same is true for their governing body. Our correspondence with them was returned unopened. So we tried their governing body, the U of M Board of Regents. We were limited to one speaker and two minutes. You just heard it. We've tried to understand U of M's need for the full site, but we do not. They have not explained why total demolition is their only solution. They are unwilling to consider alternative site uses, even administrative hospital uses. And in conversation with our mayor, city council, and local unions, they have implied that they will build this mental health facility elsewhere if they cannot demolish the total building. Is this what collaboration and partnership now looks like in Lansing? I was taken aback by the U of M Look to Michigan recent fundraising campaign, where they say "Solutions to challenges are within our reach, though through a commitment to public good, our culture of collaboration, and our dedicated partners." In purchasing Sparrow, U of M became part of this community and its 130-year history of collaboration around healthcare. It was formed by the Women's Hospital Association in 1896, and 100 years later, there have been nearly three enormous Capitol campaign expansions of the campus. In '97, the Sparrow Professional Building. In '08, the Swan Tower. In 2017, the Herbert Herman Center. All involved extensive community collaboration. We are here tonight asking you to encourage U of M to the table, minimally to explain their site needs for the entire site and to try to meet those needs while preserving a small portion of Eastern High School. Please deny permit requests until demolition discussion and use and options for future funding is taken place. Lansing deserves both quality mental health and buildings that reflect our history. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Belinda Fitzpatrick, followed by James Bell.
Amen, deny the demolition permits. Property is a relationship between people regarding things. That's one thing that I remember reading when I was in law school. And, you know, I tell them, go ahead, take your jobs elsewhere. There's other things that can be done with that property. Myself, I think it's confusing enough that we have all this U of M signage around here. I decided to go to school at Michigan State University. I decided not to go to U of M, because the people that I met from MSU, when I lived in the 313 area down in Detroit, the people from MSU were nice, friendly, outgoing people. The people from U of M were arrogant. I've come to respect both schools over the years, but let them take the whole thing, their whole business out of town. There's got to be other potential use. Now, they say that, you know, this is supposed to be for the mental health. What about the psychic trauma to our community? What about the disorientation? What about the confusion I already feel when I'm driving down, you know, driving around the east side of Lansing going, "Am I in, am I in Ann Arbor, or am I in the east side of Lansing?" Now, just tell them, they got to get to the table and talk to these people, because they're being a lot more reasonable than I would be if I were in charge, you know? You tell me what to do with my property, you know? You can tell them what to do with their property. There's got to be something that, some sort of control that the city has over this, you know? I used to be a member of the Michigan Society of Planning Officials, and I spent a lot of time reading their reports. And one of the things I remember was that the Romans had realized that continuity of the environment and historic structures are important to the psyche of the community. I didn't go to Eastern, my cousin did. She graduated in '81. Her father graduated a quarter of a century earlier in '51, and his mother graduated a quarter of a century before that in '31. That school has been, that building is important to the psychic psychiatric health of this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is James Bell, followed by Judith Evans.
Good evening. I'm a West Side resident, academically trained as a historian. And I went to and taught at, excuse me, I taught at Eastern and Sexton High School. So as a historian, memory is a funny thing. Through memory, we build the story of our lives. And through memory, we know where we've been. We know the paths we've walked, the roads we've taken. Through memory, we live with the pains of the past and the love that's lifted us. We build our lives in and around and upon memory. This is a truth to every person here in the room. It's a truth to our community. It's a truth to the city. These shared memories become attached to events, to people, and the places in which they happened. At first, we go by these places, and it might be just this sense of nostalgia. But then, when those places face change or even destruction, the place itself builds an emotional intensity, and the feeling grows that something sacred, something deep in our memories, something vital to the community is being lost. Eastern High School is not the only such place in the city of Lansing. It should be the responsibility of this council, the mayor, the Historic District Commission, of which I'm a member, and the community itself to identify and protect those places that have this quality of sacredness, a place to be honored and protected. Otherwise, these places disappear in the march of progress, and part of the character of the city disappears with the places. I'm reminded of a Bob Dylan song, "It's All Right Ma, I'm Only Bleeding," in which he says, and this might apply to the University of Michigan Regents, "It's easy to see without looking too far that nothing much is really sacred." So when you look around the room here, it's not just nostalgia that these people are bringing to you. It's this feeling of something sacred being lost. And when this happens, as it has now certainly, and will in the future, this is no longer insignificant, but it arises from a true concern for a place that was and is core to the history of Lansing. As we strive to revitalize Lansing for the future, let's preserve the places worthy of protecting and honoring their memory. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Judith Evans, followed by Don Dean. Next is Judith Evans, followed by Don Dean.
I hold the unpopular opinion that Eastern High School should be redeveloped for a psychiatric facility, if that is indeed what U of M Sparrow plans to do. It is obvious that we have a homeless population in Lansing, Michigan, and I did some research before coming here. And there are so many studies that document the correlation between mental health and homelessness, anywhere from 30% to 70% in whatever study you want to pick, but the majority of studies have labeled the homeless population as being approximately 30% suffering from some kind of mental illness. One of my degrees was in music therapy, and I went out to California to work and do my internship, and it was at the Napa State Hospital for the criminally insane. And this was back in the late '70s. By the '80s, the majority of those hospitals were closed down. And the ability for people to reach out and get some kind of intervention in order to help them with whatever mental illness was plaguing them was pretty much lost. My youngest sister was a victim of this, and ended up tragically dying because she just could not get the help that she needed. I do not believe that buildings are sacred. I believe that people are sacred. I do not believe that the march of progress is measured by saving old buildings. I think it's by saving people. And I understand that what I have to say may be anecdotal, but I was hired by the Lansing School District and had spent 13 years teaching at Everett. But I also had students, because I teach privately, I had students who went to Eastern, and I'm well familiar with the building. And I know that the infrastructure is compromised at best, and the auditorium is not technically, it can't handle the technical aspects of today's modern communication needs, I guess we could say. I know that the Tarazo steps in Eastern are worn and a danger because of how many thousands of kids' feet have traveled down them. I know that there is a history of problems with black mold and roof leakage. I know that there was a history of, of chemical problems in the building itself.
Thank you.
So I'd like to think about people rather than buildings.
Thank you. The final speaker tonight is Don Dean.
Don Dean, North Side. I wore this shirt specifically because what it says is, "Don't be a jerk." It's a calculus joke. And I believe that the Eastern actually provided education for multitudes of people. I went to Eastern for four years myself, and in 2019, I went with the, with probably, I'd say 30 alumni, and we did a walkthrough of it, and that West Wing that we're all talking about, and the auditorium was still in, I mean, in decent shape. That was the last time that I think the public was allowed to go in there, at least one of the last times. And it, like, like, I believe people are, to speak, to the last speaker, people are sacred, but places are also sacred. You know, and, and, I mean, if they weren't sacred, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be serving on the Friends of Bancroft Park Board. So play, so, because that's, that's another place that's very sacred, very dear to my heart. But Eastern also is. There are so, so many people that went through, went through there, and every time you go down Pennsylvania Avenue, you see that, it's a landmark. That Lansing doesn't have a whole lot of iconic buildings, especially in the outline. A lot of them are downtown. And we need to do something as a community, as the council, Mayor Shore, to preserve these kinds of places so that we can, we can say, yes. And if, if we can do, if they can do that to, not U of M, but I've seen other places in Kalamazoo and other places like that, where they've taken buildings that are as old or older and rehab, rehabilitated them and made them useful. And we're just asking for a small sliver. So please, please consider that places are, places are memories, and memories are sacred. Because if they weren't, why would we, why do we grieve people? We grieve people because of their loss. We grieve places that are no longer there, because they are, they're, they're part of our, they're part of our history. People say it's emotion. I'm sorry, but emotion is, every person on the planet has emotions. So with that said, I would like to invite everyone to the East Side Neighborhood and Organizations Christmas Dinner this Friday. I believe it's at six or eight, it's at Foster in Room 213. And then we're also having a free Christmas movie next Saturday at 12:45, and also in Room 213 at Foster. Thank you.
Thank you. We have several written communications regarding Eastern High School as well, from Ariane Overholz, Mary Cusack, Colleen Schmidt, Sally Ann Pierce, Chris Skanda Nelson, and Susan Waifrich. And that was our final speaker.
Okay, thank you. With no further business on the agenda, we are adjourned.